Stay May 1st. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Danielle Henderson.
Here.
Michael DiMartini. Bill Houck.
Here.
Michael Drinkwater.
Here.
John Enlow.
Here.
John Flansburgh. Mickey Hazelwood.
Here.
John Martini.
Here.
John Combs.
Here.
Dave Solero.
Here.
Mervyn Wright.
Here.
John Zimmerman.
Here.
Harry Fonstock. Thomas Payette. Mylan Nugaian. Cindy Turcheck. Ron Penrose. We have a quorum.
Great. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Three-minute time limit per person. I don't have any cards at this time. I don't see anybody coming up, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, any comments? Motion been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Extinctions. Motion carries. Okay, next item is the approval of the minutes from April 3rd, 2019 meeting. Any comments, any needed changes?
Need to approve?
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion and possible recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission for approval of amendments to agreements to continue funding for the projects listed below and possible direction to staff. Chris Wessel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This agenda item relates to two ongoing projects, and it's styled for the commission, should you agree with the scopes of work. We're looking for recommendations of the Western Regional Water Commission for funding for the upcoming fiscal year. The first of the two, and I suspect council will want you to make a motion on each of these individually. Item 5A relates to Stormwater Quality Management Program. The Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee was formed by interlocal agreement, developed and implement the community's EPA municipal stormwater program. The committee is made up of staff from Reno Sparks, Washoe County, and is currently administered by City of Reno. The funding for the program from the Regional Water Management Fund began in 2011 at the request of Western Regional Water Commission in the amount of $262,500 annually, which equates to $87,500 per entity. Teresa Jones is the program administrator for City of Reno, and she's here today. If you have any questions about the program or the proposal for this year. With that, Mr. Chair, I turn that back for your deliberation.
Are there any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the eighth amendment to the interlocal agreement with City of Reno in an amount not to exceed $262,500 from the fund.
We have a motion and a second to approve the eighth amendment to come from the Truckee Meadows Fund. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Extinctions. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our next item is 5B. This is the Tumwaw Water Usage Review Program. This item relates to an amendment to an ILA for the continued support of Tumwaw Water Audit Program for fiscal year 1920. The Regional Water Management Fund has provided support for this program since its inception in 2003. The program involves Tumwaw staff working with homeowners and businesses to improve management of indoor and outdoor water usage. According to Tumwaw, the program's been very well received by the public and is considered to be very successful. With that, Lane Crispman is here and is available to provide you any information or answer any questions regarding the program. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission?
Good job.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion to provide a recommendation to the WRWC for approval of the eighth amendment to the IAA interlocal agreement with Tumwaw in the amount not to exceed $100,000 to support the water use program for fiscal year 2019-2020.
We have a motion and a second.
I'll second that with the clarification that this is the fifth amendment.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Reading as staff recommendation.
Somebody's re-sylling their agenda item.
We have a motion and a second to approve the fifth amendment to the interlocal agreement in the amount not to exceed $100,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to item number six, discussion and possible approval of amendments to agreements to continue funding for the projects listed below. Have approved, authorize the WRWC Water Resources Program Manager to execute the amendments and possible direction to staff. Chris Wessel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this item is set out in such that if the commission were to agree with the proposed scopes of work, we're looking for the approval to have the program manager enter into these proposed agreements. So item 6A is the precipitation monitoring program. This project involves the collection of precipitation data in various basins throughout southern Washoe County by means of precipitation can gauges. The project began in 1990s, mid-1990s, with many of the sites having 15- to 20-year record, year data records. The project was orphaned during the merger between Tumwaw and Washoe County DWR, and Western Regional Water Commission was asked to adopt the program, and we did so. The proposal is a funding request to provide continued monitoring for the following, for this upcoming year, fiscal year 1920. Greg McCurdy from DRI is here, and I think there is some, there may be some interesting things about the program that are ongoing that you might be interested in learning about outside of the monitoring. So I turn it over to Mr. McCurdy to bring us up to date on the status.
Thank you. It's good to be here today. One of the things that we've actually taken this last year is an ongoing effort to continue to analyze the data. Our previous work over the previous couple of years was to actually start to take a look at the types of differences that we were seeing between, in particular, what data would be, how it would be interpreted if the network were to be removed, and what kind of information might be collected from that. Above here is a little bit of our ongoing effort. Just as a little reminder, the previous effort actually identified that the existing collection of the network data showed that the comparisons of the PRISM model was not very sufficient in characterizing properly the Washoe basins, mostly due to lack of data that was being collected. And so we took upon ourselves the effort to then take the data from this network and analyze. As a brief summary, what that identified was is that during dry years, it actually turned out that the PRISM model was not showing it to be as dry as what it really was. During wet years, it showed it not to be as wet as what it really was. So it was very, not very representative of what was really happening in the basins. What you see on the boards here is where we've taken the work from the PRISM data, used it as kind of a forcing model to then take the data from the data we've collected, and to then distribute that data throughout the basin. And this basin you're taking a look at here is actually the Antelope Valley, extending a little bit into Cold Springs, essentially from the northern extent of Lemon Valley up to, contains Bedell Flat and that area. We are collecting data from other basins in the county, but we haven't extended this work into those basins quite yet, and that's what our next efforts would be looking to do, in conjunction with continuing to collect the data from the network. What you can see here, and here's a representation of January of 2016 of itself, with the PRISM data and how it distributes across the basin, that coverage area. On the left and on the right is the, taking the rain gauge data that has been collected, and using that information to better distribute the actual occurrence of what precipitation was measured from those gauges. We've actually got several of these slides that would come up here that actually represent the year of 2016, that I'll kind of let you look through at a time as you have opportunity. But what it does show is that there is some significant information that's being added by the collection of this data for understanding more of the local events of what's happening in the basin versus what the modeled data would represent. I guess with that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions from the commission?
John. Mr. Enlow.
I just had a question. Originally, there were over 80 gauges. How many gauges is DRI currently maintaining?
At this point, we have not removed any of those gauges. However, as opportunity allows us to get to them, some of them are quite remote, we're typically actually monitoring about 65 to 70 of them a year. There are a few of the gauges that are in some very outlying areas that we've found or not, and I'll probably actually be collecting those in this coming year. So we're still not reducing it a lot, so.
Are those gauges in decent shape, or are you finding you have to repair or replace some of the equipment?
They're in pretty decent shape. They're actually very simple. What it is, is it's essentially a two-to-two-and-a-half-foot extension or extent of PVC pipe, and then a cap on the end of it. That's it. So as long as it hasn't frozen and cracked the bottom or cracked the tubing on it, yeah, I'll be deploying those, because we have had a few that have, we've found some problems with. And typically what it is, is that the cap ends up cracking, and then it will slowly leak, and sometimes it takes a little while to discover that, but I've got a couple of them in particular that I'm going to be replacing.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion on this possible action item.
I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
I'll make a motion to continue funding for the fourth amendment to the IAA with DRI in an amount not to exceed $20,000 from Regional Water Management Fund to support the precipitation monitoring project for the next fiscal year.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the fourth amendment to the interlocal agreement with DRI in an amount not to exceed $20,000 from our Regional Water Management Fund to support the project work fiscal years 19 and 20. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our second item in this agenda item, second project, is the Washoe ET project. The Washoe ET project is a conservation program element identified in the Regional Water Management Plan. The project's goal is to provide irrigators, commercial and private, with local ET rates to allow for more efficient use of water. The attached request is a proposal for operation, maintenance, and funding for the stations for FYA 1920. Again, if you have any questions about this program, Mr. McCurdy can provide you with an update to this. We've been, we began this program quite some time ago, and it's been ongoing. We've got it down almost to a maintenance level, so. With that, I'd turn it back to you for consideration.
Mr. McCurdy's available for any questions from the commission?
I have one question, I'm sorry. Chris, you may be. Didn't we talk about this being, this information being linked either on the Water Planning Commission's website, the Tumwaw's website? I was going to ask Lane, did he left?
Great question. I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to make a comment about that. The Washoe ET project Greg and I were just talking about. The Washoe ET information is currently linked to the Western Regional Water, and the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission page under the GIS mapping, which is now active. You can go there and you can look up the stations, and they're active. If you click on them, you can get all the data for those stations. The other thing we're looking to do, and this is a little, just to step back, is the precipitation gauges, we're trying to do the same thing with those. Problem is, they're not automated, so they have to be hand input, but we were just discussing a manner by which we can put that in, and you'd be able to go and look at all the historical data for that also. So hopefully, all that data will be up here pretty soon, so we're almost there.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Not, I entertain a motion on this possible action item.
I'll make a motion to approve the fifth amendment to the interlocal agreement with DRI in an amount not to exceed $10,000 to support the Washoe Zappa Transpiration Project for fiscal year 2020.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the fifth amendment to the interlocal agreement with DRI in an amount not to exceed $10,000 from our Regional Water Management Fund for fiscal year 1920. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, which is discussion and possible recommendation to the WRWC for approval of a proposal by the regional effluent management team for funding in an amount not to exceed $75,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund to evaluate the feasibility of discharging Reno Stead Water Reclamation Facility effluent along Long Valley Creek and possible direction to staff. Jim Smitherman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as the chairman mentioned, this is a recommendation that comes from the effluent management team. I'll jump in, kind of summarize and maybe expand on some of the points I made in this first page of the staff report. So this kind of starts off with the City of Reno expecting to finish an expansion of the Reno Stead Water Reclamation Facility in two years, or about two years. And increasing discharge of effluent to Swan Lake is probably not going to be feasible, at least in the timeframe that would be concurrent with the need because of the flooding issues that are up there now, potential future flooding issues. Expanding in-basin purple pipe reuse system would, from talking to City of Reno engineers, would require quite a bit of improvement because how Lemon Valley is laid out, there would be a long distance between potential customers. So it's potentially a big expenditure. And then thinking about what I'm learning with the effluent team is that the national trend is really moving more towards investing in treatment and bringing the level of treatment of your effluent to a higher level rather than expanding the purple pipe systems and doing more irrigation and industrial use and that sort of thing. And a discharge pipeline to Long Valley Creek, well, let me back up. The improvements to a purple pipe system may end up being stranded if what we're all hoping for in our efforts to evaluate the feasibility of category A-plus reclaimed water being used to store underground, augment alcifers, that sort of thing. So if we're able to have a discharge pipeline to Long Valley Creek as an alternative for discharge to bridge the gap between maybe when the need is for Reno Stead and when, hopefully, the feasibility turns out to be positive, and we can be putting category A-plus water underground, that pipeline would be valuable. And then it would be valuable even beyond that in that if there were ever a reason to move water out of the basin, out of the Lemon Valley basin for whatever reason, including maybe there's a hiccup in an A-plus treatment system, it would give us a safety valve. It would give the region a place to put the water if it couldn't be discharged underground. It's also, you know, it's got some kind of sideline benefits. One is that it would be a safety valve so that we wouldn't have to look at the feasibility of moving that effluent or moving raw sewage down into the Truckee River Basin as well, and just putting more burden on Tumwaw. I think that, I'm convinced from the discussion with the effluent management team, that this is an alternative that at least is worth looking at the feasibility of. It would entail somewhere between nine and 10 miles of pipeline. I think there's already kind of a draft outline of an alignment. And then thinking back and how I started the staff report off, this has been something that's been on the Water Planning Commission's radar since the early 2000s, I think, is when we first started looking at alternatives as far as managing effluent within the region. So it wouldn't require a conformance review as far as our plan, because the concept is in there now. So with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman, for deliberation and a decision.
Okay, are there any questions from the commission?
I have some comments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Enlow.
So just to provide a little more context to this discussion, so speaking as one of the members of the regional effluent management team, Michael Drinkwater is also in that group. We've had a lot of discussions regarding this effluent management option and just understanding the feasibility of it or not. And I wish Commissioner Flansburgh was here, but the City of Reno took this concept, it was part of a bigger proposal. They were actually looking at the pipeline alignments and starting some preliminary design work to the Reno City Council, I want to say back in October, November timeframe. And at that time, the Reno City Council elected not to pursue this work, primarily because of really the resource implications. There was not a strong desire to, if we're going to treat this water to a very high level, to discharge it to Long Valley Creek and really have Nevada, our community, not receive any beneficial use of that water. That being said, I think the regional effluent management team unanimously feels that having multiple effluent management options available to us is really one of the most important things that we can do. We can't be hampered by just having reclaimed water as the one and only alternative, or just to discharge to the Truckee River as the one and only alternative. We need to have multiple options available to us. And so what we're asking with this request is to just evaluate the, really, the permitting feasibility of this effort because it involves a number of agencies, federal, Nevada, and California. And this work effort would involve basically working with those agencies to establish the parameters of what would be required if Reno, and I'll say Washoe County too, this could be an option for Cold Springs in the future. So it's not just a City of Reno option, it's not just a Washoe County option. Tumwaw is also interested in this indirectly because of the work on the category A-plus water, as Jim alluded to. So having multiple methods to manage effluent, I think, is important. And so Commissioner Flansburgh and myself met with our common elected officials, that being Ginny Brekis, Naomi Doer, and Naomi Jordan independently, and reviewed this because of Reno's prior decision not to go forward with it. And I will say, there was not a unanimous opinion on what to do with this for a number of reasons, not really even associated with the technical merits of this option at all. So I think if this commission were to recommend this to the Western Regional Water Commission, I think we'll have a much more lively discussion at Western Regional on the merits of this alternative. But again, and Michael, feel free to jump in, because this indirectly affects Tumwaw as well. But speaking for the regional effluent management team, we feel it's important to understand what options this community has available for effluent management.
Yes. So thinking back on what John said, I spent the better part of, well, all of my time with the City of Reno from about 2006 to 2012, working with Dan Schumacher, trying to find an answer to F1 disposal of North Valleys. There aren't many good choices. Now, we didn't have any plus on the table back then. Long Valley Creek was in the mix, but it was, for other reasons, non-agony reasons, was not something that was looked favorably upon. It may continue to be politically or economically not viable, but right now, we don't know. And we have, this is the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, I think it's incumbent upon us to look at the picture and say, what are the options available to this community five, 10, 15 years from now? And right now, we don't know if Long Valley Creek is an option. There may be any number of deal killers out there, be they environmental, maybe an endangered species, maybe legal, maybe economic, but we owe it to the community to take a look and say, is this potentially one of the answers, or one of the tools in the tool belt? And I don't, and the way that North Valleys, the flooding snuck up on us, you know, a couple of years, like, starting in 2017, and all of a sudden, now we need an answer yesterday? I prefer not to wait until this is on fire before we decide to take a look. Let's do it now. Perhaps exclude it as an option, as a viable option, or perhaps decide that it met the first test, time to take a closer look, because it's not going to happen in one investigation. But I would encourage this commission to look long-term and take this first step.
Okay. Mr. Houck.
Yeah, I think this is a real interesting concept and something that we really need to take a look at. So I would like to make a motion that we recommend to the Western Regional Water Commission for approval of the proposal by regional effluent management team for funding in an amount not to exceed $75,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund to evaluate the feasibility of discharging Reno Stead Water Reclamation Facility effluent to Long Valley Creek.
Second. Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to...
Question.
We've got a question.
Do we have a concept at this point as to whether this would be a direct contract from the Western Regional Water Commission with a consultant, or whether it would be done through one of the member agencies?
This would be a consultant. The City of Reno had already basically identified the consultant they were going to use for this work from their qualified list, and we would propose to use that same consultant.
That'll work. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve a recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission for approval of this proposal by the regional effluent management team for funding in an amount not to exceed $75,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund to evaluate the feasibility of discharging Reno Stead Water Reclamation Facility effluent to Long Valley Creek.
Chair, I've got a question. One item for discussion, if I may. I do believe for a lot of the right reasons, it is our duty to push these types of projects forward to the WRWC. I think this is what they've asked us to be doing, and so I appreciate this board and the effluent management team bringing this forward as a project to be reviewed in this forum. I think this is the exact right forum for us to be leaders in our community, to get these types of things done, even if there's not a political appetite at this time. I think our job is to make sure that all options are at least looked at and, you know, put on the table or taken off the table. So thank you, you know, thank you all for bringing this forward.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we'll move on to item number eight, which is the presentation, discussion, and possible recommendation to the WRWC for approval of a proposal by Washoe County for funding in an amount not to exceed $100,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund to support a project to restudy and remap current designated flood zones in Lemon Valley. Dwayne Smith, Director, Engineering and Capital Projects Division, Washoe County.
Good afternoon, everybody. For Director Dwayne Smith, Washoe County. So I wanted to come before you today to ask for your recommendation to the WRWC to support some, at least a portion of the funding required to restudy and remap the FEMA flood plains in the Cold Springs, excuse me, in the east and west Lemon Valley hydrobasins. As we all know, that there's been flooding, we're currently in a management strategy right now for these areas. right now for these areas, specifically Silver Lake and Swan Lake. And, you know, through this process, over the last couple of years, we've seen impacts to public infrastructure and we've seen impacts to private properties. And through these experiences, we've been reviewing the closed basins, the impacts, and what the needs are. And so I wanted to just step through briefly with you a couple of slides. Maybe Jennifer can help me. I think if you hit the spacebar. There we go. Either you or me, I'm not sure. Just quickly, just to give, continue with a little perspective, these are a couple of graphs that we put together showing water levels. This is in Swan Lake, but we can see back in, prior to... It's working. Back in early part of 2016, basically Swan Lake was dry. We saw a significant precipitation event, a series of precipitation events, which led to ultimately two presidentially declared flood disasters in 2017. About 10 feet of rise in Swan Lake. We also see a couple of feet of evaporation, about two and a half feet of evaporation on an annual basis out of the lake. Interestingly, in 2018, we saw about 1.6 feet of water rise in Swan Lake. But starting in the fall, November of this last year, and then certainly through January and February of this year in Swan Lake, you can see that the lake rose 3.8 feet. So to respond to these things, we've put management strategies in place, barriers, berm's. We've added some inflatable dams, those types of things. I haven't used this one before. Same thing in Silver Lake. A lot of barriers have been put up and management, again, of the pool associated with Silver Our current FEMA floodplain information, our Swan Lake BFE is 4924. That comes from a 1994 flood insurance study that was done. Silver Lake, the current BFE is 4972. That's about three feet higher than, based on some work by the City of Reno in 2009. This is the existing 100-year floodplain in Swan Lake. Not the best map, but you can see the boundary of that 4924 elevation. Just want to draw your attention up to the very north end. You'll see the outside boundary, but then on the inside, there's a soil berm, a natural soil berm in there. I'll mention a little bit more about that in just a second. This is the 100-year floodplain in Silver Lake. So currently, there is a need to understand what the real FEMA floodplain is and the BFEs are for these two lakes. There are no problems with the floodplain in Swan Lake. As a matter of fact, if I flip back here for just a second, that little area, that north piece where the floodplain doesn't exist, that's actually where the first house, out of the three homes that had water, entered the living space in 2017. The first house that had water in it is actually not in the FEMA-designated floodplain. It did not have flood insurance for their home. There's a lot of challenges with that floodplain. We have better topographic data now, LiDAR. We've done some current work with our LiDAR data to update pond curves, to understand volumes of water. There's a pretty good discrepancy between even what we had, what we had and the recent work that we've done. I think there's better modeling approaches. We have better precipitation data. All of these things allow for better calibration of models that will help us understand these floodplains and these BFEs and what those impacts are. There's been a lot of discussion about what we need to do in these closed basins. Future projects, be they levees, elevated roadways, berm's, other things, require us to have the best information. For instance, if we were going to go in and build some type of levee to provide protections, we would need to know what that actual BFE is so that we can apply wave run-up and those types of things in order to receive certification through the core. That would ultimately allow us then to include those elements within a new floodplain analysis. I think one of the biggest benefits of re-studying this area associated, not just with what work that we're trying to do, is that we probably can demonstrate that there are some areas that are outside of the floodplain, or at least through activities and actions that may result in these studies and other things, that there may be an opportunity to take people out of the floodplain. So my request today is for your consideration in providing some funding in next year's budget to allow for these re-studies. Now, I've already gone to Washoe County and secured, or at least gotten the commitment for some funding, up to $125,000. I'm asking for recommendation to WRWC for $100,000. There's going to probably be a need for more funding. I want to be clear with you. I have not put an RFP on the street yet, so I don't know what the final cost will be. There's some discussion I've been having with Mr. Flansburgh regarding the Silver Lake area. Even though they did the update in 2009, the approach here that we would take with the new, and certainly the new precipitation data, may result in a different basis for determining the precipitation patterns associated with closed basins and what those water levels ultimately would be. So there's going to be some pretty rigorous work that goes into this. And so the actual cost of what this effort is going to be, I don't have that answer for you. I will be putting this RFP out on the street, hopefully releasing it in June, and then going through the process and initiating work in the fall. But my request to you is to support that, up to $100,000 in funding from WRWC to do this work. I'm committed to getting, again, Washoe County funding to match with this, funding from WRWC, and potentially other sources, maybe other municipalities, other stakeholders. I really should be using the term stakeholders. Some of the municipalities are stakeholders, development communities are stakeholders. There's also grants available that we may be able to apply and direct toward this. If I'm successful in getting those grants and other stakeholder participation, the approach would be to come back and let you know if it was the full $100,000 or something less. I want to leave the door open that if things, if I couldn't get funding from others, that I might come back and ask for a little bit more as well. So I just wanted to put that out there. We're also doing a five-year update to the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan for our area. Part of that this time is to do a deeper dive and create a closed basin mitigation plan following the FEMA guidelines. FEMA has a very robust process for going through a closed basin mitigation, or excuse me, through a floodplain mitigation process. And we're using that to apply towards our closed basin mitigation planning work. Those efforts are going to look at return frequencies, risk, potential solutions, funding, funding strategies, all to come back and make recommendations to, for instance, my commission. But this data that would come out of these remapping and re-studying efforts associated with the floodplains will also play into that, again, to help support things like levees, road raising, those types of things. So not only is this going to help us as we, as we move forward over the short term, I think this will really become a tool that will allow us to understand our need in our closed basins. So I appreciate a few minutes of your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, Danielle.
So thank you for your presentation. On behalf of the Truckee River Flood Management Authority, I would just like to give my support to this recommendation. And after I make this comment, I'd like to make a motion. Our agency is involved in a similar effort in the Truckee Meadows. And as you know, we do have these regional flooding issues. They've been discussed at length in our agency and with the Needs Committee that was created earlier. And I think this is a great way to start addressing those issues. I'm involved with the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, and so I would just like to, again, on behalf of my agency, give my support for this. And to that effect, I would like to make a motion. I would like to recommend to the WRWC that they approve this proposal by Washoe County for funding in an amount not to exceed $100,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund to support the project to re-study and remap current designated flood zones in Lemon Valley. Thank you.
Okay. We've got a second. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Yes, okay, we've got Mr. Drinkwater and then Mr. Martini.
I'm sorry, for those of us not super familiar with flood maps, what's the potential impact to be done with this work? What's the risk?
Well, I think the biggest risk is that we, as a community, moving forward with the mitigation planning work, with addressing the issues that we have in the closed basins without the right data, without the right boundaries, without the right BFEs, base flood elevations, I don't think we can come up with necessarily the right solutions or at least understand what's available to us. So I think it is very important that we study these closed basins. I think the other thing that I would mention to you is that we're, I'm taking a very close look right now at another closed basin, North Spanish Springs, Boneyard Flat. And again, we don't, we're learning over these recent experiences that there is probably a much better way. We have better technology, better processes, better programs, better models that will allow us to really understand what those risks are and then apply the right strategies to mitigate those risks. So I think without doing these types of things, we're not doing what our community expects us to do ultimately as floodplain managers, as people in public works, as municipalities.
Mr. Martini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Duane, I'm a little curious, you've secured $125,000 from Washoe County, you're requesting $100,000 here. What does your gut tell you how much you're going to need?
Yeah, that's a good question. I've reached out to a couple of local professionals just to get an idea. A number between 250 and 350 was batted around.
And then, follow-up question, Duane. So as floodplain managers, we are obligated, when we know there's been a change of conditions to our existing conditions models that are filed with FEMA. You mentioned a different look, potentially precipitation. So, you know, historically, our flood mapping is based on the 100-year 24-hour event. What are the thoughts for precipitation modeling for closed basins that you're considering right now?
As you might know, the current approach was to look at the 100-year 10-day with a base or carryover volume from a 25-year 24-hour storm. Given soil conditions, given evaporation, giving, given other changes within these basins, and then that's one of the reasons why I showed you that graph, that here we had a record-setting 2017, followed up in two years with, again, a basically a much higher-than-normal water year at 3.8 feet, resulting in a 3.8-foot rise. What happens if we, as we move forward, we see maybe these warmer winter storms, higher snow levels, greater runoff? I think that the precipitation data is leading us or requiring us to take a look at this. Will it be a, I think it'll be something more than the 25-year 24-hour carryover. I believe that that will be higher as a result of this work.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this, Mr. Chair. Duane, I commend you for your effort. I think looking at contingency in a different way is brave, and I'll look forward to seeing what the work comes out as.
Thank you.
It's a good job, thank you.
Mr. Edlow.
So this wasn't budgeted in our proposed budget, so are you recommending that this come out of the contingency fund line item?
That's probably where it would fit best right now, depending on if other proposals come through as we had anticipated in the budget. But right now, yes, that's where I'd say we'd go for it.
Kind of a related question. And there was some work that was proposed by the county and the City of Reno on really the ditch flooding issue, and we've heard that's in the works for a long time, and I remember we still had a line item for that. Does this funding, would this funding impact that study in any way?
No, I don't believe it does. That work is just as important in a lot of respects. We have some draft scopes of work that we're still working through, and I think that that's, that these are two separate things, and I think it should be treated that way, yes.
Jim, could you comment on that? I just want to make sure that this funding doesn't impact that funding as well.
Okay, Chris and I were just discussing, I don't have a copy of the tentative budget as recommended right now, but if, remember, we moved some funding for something down into contingency. Was that the GIS mapping?
I think it was.
Yeah, yeah, so that, I believe, was the funding that would have been used for that project. So we'd have to, we'd have to sharpen the pencil and make sure that we've got enough to cover both.
Okay. I mean, don't get me wrong, I support this too, and I agree with you that both of them are important, so.
I believe we can, we can support both of them.
Okay.
I'm 99% sure, so let's move forward.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve a recommendation to WRWC approval proposed by Washoe County for this funding, not to exceed $100,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund to support the project to re-study and remap the current designated flood zones in Lemon Valley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number nine, report on legislative activities regarding bills pending in the 2019 session of the Nevada Legislature that may affect or are of interest to the WRWC and NWPC. John Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we last met, your Legislative Subcommittee met on March 5th. There was a pretty strong consensus at that meeting that all of the positions that the committee wished to take on the bills that we're tracking had been solidified, depending on amendments as they occurred in the process. The committee was scheduled to meet again also on, I'm sorry, that was on April 5th, not March 5th, if I said March 5th. They were scheduled to meet again on April 12th, but we, there was not a quorum for that meeting, so no action was taken. But again, I don't think anyone, anything would have changed from where they were on their April 5th meeting. So I have put together and provided to you as a handout today, a fairly complete and very up-to-date report on all of the bills that we've been tracking. The current status, I have highlighted in yellow so you can tell exactly where each bill is. Normally, we have some pretty high attrition by bills that don't make it out of committee or don't make it out of the first house by the legislative deadlines that are set. In this case, there were only four bills that died that way, and they are indicated in the report. The first one was one of the state engineer bills, and that was the one dealing, expanding the authority of the state engineer over conjunctive management of groundwater and surface water. That bill died in committee. The next one was AB 265, which would have required the... The next one was AB 265, which would have required the Desert Research Institute to conduct a study on water treatment and recycling. The third one that died in committee was SB 280. That raised some controversy because it revised the definition of bodies of water that constituted navigable rivers or navigable bodies of water. That bill died in committee. And the last one that didn't make it, actually, there's two more, so five. The last two that didn't make it out of committee were AB 127, which was the bill on an open meeting issue, which would have required any person who was being paid to testify before a public body to disclose that fact prior to testifying. And the last bill that died in committee was the public meeting, or it related to public meeting, which would have authorized a private plaintiff, I'm sorry, not public meeting, but it was under right to sue, would have authorized a private plaintiff to bring an action for declaratory relief against a governmental entity without having any other standing. And that didn't go anywhere either. There is one new bill that was just introduced yesterday. It was declared exempt, and by way of that exemption, it was a BDR that we were tracking. The BDR was S 1177. And we now know that what that bill does, it comes out of the governor's office, and it's a request for an appropriation from the general fund to the Department of Agriculture to provide $400,000 for water conservation projects to facilitate modernization of techniques for irrigation and water storage for agriculture and ranching industries. I believe that the Subcommittee on that position, on that bill will be, well, would be if they were to meet, would be neutral watch. We will take that to the WRWC at their meeting on, what is our meeting? Jim, May, when we do the budget? May 17?
May 23.
May 23. I'm a week behind there, sorry. And I think this is competing for other appropriations, so if they want to go ahead and put a support on it, they'll have the opportunity to do that. The Subcommittee, as I know, as I understand right now, does not intend to have any other meetings prior to the close of the session, but they're looking at having a joint meeting with the Tamwah Subcommittee after the close of the session to, for the purpose of, a type of debriefing and summary, to see what happened and where we were and where things ended up. I think that's a good idea. We haven't done that before, but I think it would be helpful to have that meeting. So I think all of the information you may want or need is in my updated report as of today. You can peruse that at your pleasure and leisure, but I would be happy to answer any questions today if I can, if you have them.
Are there any questions from the commission? Good job, John.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then to item number 10, which is the Program Managers' Report. Jim Smitherman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Status report on projects that are underway is up to date, and you can see the percent complete column is just a function of paying the invoices. So some of the projects don't invoice us until the end of the fiscal year, so that's why you'll see a zero complete on those until we get into the June timeframe. And then on the flip side is the financial report, and you can see that we've actually exceeded our revenue projections by a little bit, $40,000 or so in the total revenue line. And then our actual expenditures are about $1 million, so that's significantly under the 2.3 million that we had budgeted. But again, as those invoices roll in for a couple of projects toward the very end of the fiscal year, that'll probably get closer to, but I'm confident that we're going to keep our expenditures under the 2.3 for this year. So we'll finish the year in the black. Back to you for any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Smitherman? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on into item number 11, discussion regarding location and possible agenda items for the June 2019 Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission meeting and other future meetings and possible direction to staff. Jim Smitherman.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, again. We were pretty efficient in bringing you all of the contracts and amendments that needed to be done before the end of the fiscal year, so we really don't have any pressing issues coming forward for the meeting that would be scheduled on June 5th, unless there are some items that the commission would like staff to bring back. So we have that option, or you have the option of maybe taking a couple of months off during the summer. So I would turn that back to the commission for deliberation.
Okay. Are there any comments or discussion from the commission? So we will have a meeting in June? Is it scheduled right now?
Well, I don't have any agenda items to bring you, so it would be an extremely light agenda, and I would recommend that if we, going on what I have on deck right now, I'd recommend not having the meeting in June. And then to follow on, the July meeting would fall on the 3rd of July, and that's typically one that gets canceled just because it's so close to Independence Day. So you might look at back-to-back meeting cancellations, and we'd be three months out from meeting again.
Okay. John? Nothing? So I guess we'll just hear from Jennifer on possible status of the June meeting then, unless we just take action right here and...
You could actually make a motion to cancel those two meetings, subject to them being reinstated if there are items that need to be heard.
I'll make a motion. I'll start.
Okay.
Who made that motion?
Mr. Hough made the motion, too.
My motion was what he said.
Okay, so it will be to cancel the June and July meetings unless an item comes up that needs to be acted upon? Okay, and then we had a second over here.
Yes, sir. I have a point, a question.
Okay, so...
Should, do we move to cancel a meeting, or do we just move to say to the next meeting of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, August, stuff? Does it matter?
I think it's clearer if you say the next two are canceled.
Okay.
Yeah, subject to being, you know, we can always hold them if there's a matter that needs to be heard, and that's at the discretion of the chairman.
All right, so we don't, so we're not setting the next day or...
There will be, the next regular...
The next regular meeting will be the first Tuesday in August, correct? And that's already on the calendar?
Yes. Yeah, we have a regular schedule of meetings, and that's usually why we cancel them, because we assume they're on, because we've scheduled them out for the year.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so the next item on the agenda are commission comments. Are there any commissioners with any comments you want to make? Mr. Enlow.
I do have one. This Saturday, Tamwah will be holding our annual Smart About Water Day at Idlewild Park from 10 until 2:00. So there'll be a lot of people there from Tamwah to be able to answer questions from the public. Many of our partners, the Nature Conservancy being one, will be there as well. There'll be food trucks there, too, from, so that's a good thing, and some of Tamwah's large equipment for the kids to climb on and check out, too. So if people are interested in learning more about water this Saturday at Idlewild Park 10 to 2:00, would be a great time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is staff comments.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just a comment. Chris pulled up the budget for this year, and so I just wanted to confirm with you that the localized flooding and ditch flooding line item is in there for $160,000, so that money would already be budgeted. And then it was the, I think it was $20,000 or $30,000 for GIS mapping that we moved into contingency. So that brought the contingency project budget up to $300,000. So that's where we'd be looking for funding for the project that Mr. Smith brought forward. That's it.
Great, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is public comments. Three-minute time limit per person. I don't have any cards or don't see anybody coming forward, so move on to our final item, which is adjournment. Do you have any action? Sit here for a minute.
You can clearly take a motion.
Okay, motion, all right. I guess no action, so the meeting is adjourned.